All right, it is January 28th at 6:30. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, reassess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30 and I am calling us to order with a complete and full dais. Counsel, it's good to see you. So tonight, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance and you guys, if you've been following along, you know that we usually have different youths from the schools and we get the -- city secretary and I get those names from Dr. Lee, but there's this thing called the school bond and we have no names from Dr. Lee. So that's why there are none listed on the allegiance, but my good friend Terry Moore got voluntold that she would be leading us this evening. And so Terry, with the YMCA, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand, if you are able.
I'm young enough, right? Is that what you're saying, I'm young enough? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's give Terry a round of applause. And if you would please remain standing, we are honored tonight to have Pastor Doug Duchesne from Mount Rose Missionary Baptist Church. I've had an opportunity to visit his church, I guess, three or four times and always enjoy being at Mount Rose. So Pastor Duchesne, if you'd please lead us in our invocation tonight.
Let's pray. Holy and wise God, we thank you for everyone who's here today. Thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for life within itself, for all the things that you have given unto us. But we are grateful that you are God and there is none like you. So we just come asking that you will bless this assembly tonight. Let it be for your glory. I pray that we may have our differences, but God, I pray that we will still be in one in you. Help us to be unified as for the greater good, that we might, that you might be glorified. So we thank you for all of your blessings. Ask that you just continue to bless every family that is represented here tonight. Ask that you will guide us in our situation, guide us in deliberation, guide us in everything that we do, that you will be glorified and lifted in awe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much Pastor Duchesne. You can see what a treasure he is for the City of Bastrop. Thrilled to have him. So we're moving on to Item 4A and before I do my mayor's report, I am calling forward my friend Dorothy Scarnulus, who has some very exciting news for the City of Bastrop. Ms. Scarnulus.
Mayor, counsel, good evening. One of the hats I wear sometimes is Chair of the Bastrop Bird City Coalition, which consists of 10 organizations. So it's not just the city. Those 10 are the Master Naturalist Lost Pines Chapter, the Bastrop County Audubon Group, the City of Bastrop, of course, Bastrop County Master Gardeners, L.C.R.A. McKinney-Ruffs, Bastrop State Park, the Bastrop Chamber, Visit Bastrop, Bastrop County Tourism and Development, and of course, the Parks Board. Under the auspices of the City Parks Board, we started working towards a Bird City certification almost two years ago. And last Wednesday, on January 22nd, we received the following letter. During our meeting on January 8th and 9th, the members of the Bird City Texas Review Committee carefully considered your application for certification. We are delighted to announce that the City of Bastrop has been designated as one of our inaugural Bird City communities. Congratulations to you, the members of the Bastrop Collaborative Body, the residents of Bastrop, including the wildlife benefiting from your hard work. Members were impressed with the number of criteria successfully implemented, as well as the descriptive merits, metrics created for some of the activities. One of the specific actions was the Bastrop County Tourism, ExploreBastropCounty.com website. If you haven't been there, it lists the top 10 birding sites in the county. Next was the great idea to involve the library in providing training. A wonderful job implementing a program for not disturbing trees during the nesting season. And we're encouraged by the inclusion of specific plans to include presentations by other organizations. The Bird City Texas Partners, which are Texas Parks and Wildlife and Audubon, Texas, will be launching a public congratulatory email, press release, and social media blast on February 11th. We would be happy to coordinate with your collaborative body to ensure that the news of your certification reaches as many Texans as possible. And a soon-to-be-announced date, a recognition event will be held regarding your certification. So congratulations to the City of Bastrop. And with us tonight is Kelly Simone, who is the urban biologist for Texas Parks and Wildlife. And it was the conversation that she and I had that started this crazy idea. So I'm very glad she's here tonight.
So Dorothy, I think it's important for folks to know just how many cities in the state of Texas were selected and we have 1,500 cities. How many were selected?
Four.
And they were, do you remember, because I wrote them down?
I remember.
Okay.
They kind of want to make it a splash on the 11th, but I'll share just with you.
Okay, so just amongst us.
That's Dallas, Houston, and Port Aransas.
And Bastrop, Texas. Thank you Dorothy.
Sure.
It's just a ton of work by a lot of people and it's really neat to see all those folks coming together. I would like to move forward to Item 4D and if you are on the Juneteenth Committee, if you would please step forward, I would like to read the proclamation for you and I'll meet you in front of the dais. This is way better than standing awkwardly at the podium. Here we go, all right. Whereas the origins of Black History Month can be traced to the scholar, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who created the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History in 1915, because African-Americans have played a central role in our nation's history, but for too long historians ignored or glossed over their contributions and the injustices they have suffered. And whereas in 1926, Dr. Woodson conceived a yearly celebration to help rectify the omission of African-Americans from history books and was made official by presidential designation in 1976. And whereas today, the observance of Black History Month throughout the United States stands as testament to the success of Woodson's project, an example of how we can work together to make the teaching of history more honest. And whereas having faced slavery, many forms of oppression, deep-rooted adversity, and the very real dangers of demanding equality and change, the contributions and achievements of African-Americans are imbued with unique strength and resilience which are respected and greatly valued. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the month of February 2020 as Black History Month. Let's have a round of applause. 3:00 to 5:00. Is there something else you would like to say about that? Please come out to the library. It'll be a great time, be a learning experience, and we would appreciate to see everybody in the community. Oh, nice refreshments, that always brings on the crowd. So it's in Bastrop, we're going to feed you. So we'll see you at the library at 3:00 o'clock and I'm looking forward to being there. Thank you. All right, counsel, we are going to be moving to page 3 on executive session. We are going to be going into executive session to discuss Item 10A. City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 to conduct an annual performance evaluation of the city manager as required by her employment contract. It is 6:41.
And we're adding to that Section 551.071, consultation with attorney.
551.071, consultation with attorney. It is 6:41 and we are in executive session. Colin, are we good? Okay, it is 7:52 and we are back in regular session. With reference to executive session, Item 10A, we will move to Item Number 11, take any necessary or appropriate actions on matters posted for consideration in executive session. Counsel?
Mayor, I move to approve the personnel evaluation given to the city manager on January 14th.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the resignation of Linda Umble effective immediately pursuant to the terms she listed in her memo dated January 27th of 2020 and approve the separation agreement dated January 28th of 2020.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that Trey Jobe serve as acting city manager until with a 10% pay increase that will expire when he is relieved of those duties.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously.
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor and the mayor pro Tim to research qualified individuals to serve as interim city manager and bring a recommended candidate back to the city council for consideration.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, I'd like to also make a motion, I move to authorize the mayor and the mayor pro Tim to research and recommend an executive search firm to recruit a new city manager.
A second. I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We will be moving, counsel, we're going to go to page 2 and we have citizen comments. We have two folks that are signed up to speak in citizen comments. The first person signed up to speak is Carrie Fossler. Ms. Fossler.
I'm gathering myself. I'm Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street in Bastrop and I'm here to speak about the food truck ordinance that's going to be discussed tonight. I've kept up with previous presentations and I hear there was going--
Ms. Fossler, I need to interrupt you.
I'm sorry.
Normally, I have you--
For 5B.
For 5B and I called you for citizens comments. That's totally, totally my fault. And both of the, sorry, sorry, sorry. So since we're on 5B, Mr., let's go to 5B. That was completely my fault. So let me finish the citizens comments. City Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak for citizens comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, then we are done with citizens comments. Mr. Jobe, we're going to go to 5B. Present and discuss the mobile food vending ordinance in accordance with the direction provided by city council on November 12th, 2019. Sorry, Colin, I made it hard on you. We're on 5B.
He's getting there. So I went back and reviewed all the tapes and all the discussions we had on food trucks. And the last motion we made by Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, was to table the item and come back and have a workshop. So I put in here everything that we've agreed upon and I won't bore you with all the definitions. I think we're all familiar with that. But basically, this is some ideas of what they may look like, a trailer, a truck, or a concession cart. For the mobile food vendor categories, we have a single, multiple, or single vendor located and we have stuff that would be allowed at construction sites. Here's a nice picture of some food courts. And here we have everything that we'd agreed upon to this point. The operating hours be market-driven. It must display the city permit for the health district and the records available for review. They would not operate in a public parker right away without a permit from the city. We'd follow all the adopted new codes for health and safety, along with the fire codes and equipment necessary. We'd provide proof of regular maintenance. Restroom facilities would be required if you were there for more than four hours. You have to comply, of course, to the noise and lighting standards. And you cannot block a fire lane. And unit parking must be paved, surfaced, or something approved by alternate city engineer. The items that we discussed at the last meeting in November were these here. There was quite a lot of discussion about the connection to the utilities, the required settlements, if there were going to be any competition with the brick and mortar buildings and any associated fees. So we talked about an annual $400 fee and things of that nature. To get this discussion started, again, this is all for some policy direction this evening and no decisions have been made. So possibly a resolution for this is to, if you are going to be connected to utilities and compete with the brick and mortar, you would be required to have certain things. It has to be appropriately zoned. It has to be, has to have restrooms. You're going to have to have seating. You're going to have to have the architectural lot features, so your parking would be in the second layer of your lot, that kind of thing. That's met with the B3 code and you would have an annual permit fee for each vendor at that site.
Mr. Jobe, is staff recommending that those restrooms, like a porta can, is unacceptable?
I would suggest if you're going to not compete with brick and mortar, you have something more substantial.
Okay.
So again--
So staff's recommendation is if you're that close to a restaurant, then--
It should be a restaurant with outdoor seating and then different selections for you to pick. That'd be my recommendation. So if we're truly not going to compete with brick and mortar, this is a way to do that. Again, you have nice elements. There's a gate there, there's some seating, there's some landscaping, all the stuff that you'd be required to do with a, with a restaurant.
So, I'm sorry, I have a question, Mayor.
Absolutely.
And you're only suggesting that if they're connected to the utilities?
Yes, you would, this would be your permanent connection to utilities because they would have a site that had one for each food truck or food trailer or food cart, whatever you decide.
But you're not, but the food vendors that weren't connected to utilities, you're not expecting them to build a bathroom?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was understanding the two different--
That's correct.
So you kind of did levels of the different types?
Yes. I think this is, this is very close to-- I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I just wanted to tell you, I'm sorry.
I think this brings in the restaurant elements that would, you'd be required and it also offers an opportunity for incubator space, so you could have several restaurants that start there. Maybe they're successful, maybe they get a brick and mortar building right down the street. Another option may be for the mobile food vendors that are self-contained and require minimum help, they may need water or something like that onsite, that they go to a site that's already been approved. So for instance, HEB, there was a food truck that was coming there during the pilot program. They already have restrooms, they already have a place to wash your hands, they already have parking. All those elements are already built into HEB's site plan. So you would be able to come in, you would connect for a limited period of time for the day, four hours, eight hours, something like that. You would leave, but you would use those site elements and that, again, now you're not competing with the brick and mortar because you already have those site elements.
But they would also supply the city with the agreement with, let's say, HEB, that HEB's allowing them to use all these things.
That's correct. You'd have to have property owner permission. One of the, one of the things that I do propose is the permit fees, if they are set for something like this, they discourage you not to do that every day for four hours. So for example, it'll be a shorter period of time, five days, 10, 30 days, but you would, the fees would be significant enough that you don't want to also take away all the business from people that are putting in the food court. Right? Because if it's, you need to make sure there's some competition between the two, which is a good thing. But I see this as a temporary, people that come in for the day kind of solution. Again, the property owner has to have that and you have to be connected to city utilities, to the property owner's city utilities, if that makes sense. So you can plug in, for instance, if you need to warm something up or you need water for the day, you can use that, as long as they already have a city-owned utility.
So the application would make sure that they were covering those items?
That's correct.
Councilmember Jackson, did you have a question for Mr. Jobe?
Right, I was just questioning the restrooms, but I see you're saying that the property owner must provide restroom facilities and a hand washing station. I was going to say, because some of these, although they aren't brick and mortar, they're temporary, hoping to be brick and mortar someday and moving, and so the expense of doing a restroom would be kind of, I think, a little costly for some of them.
I agree, but this is the step before you move into the food court maybe, or maybe the food court's your business plan and you lease a space to several different food trucks and that's how they generate their money. But here is just, there's a site that's already been developed and it's much like a, this would be unsustainable with residential housing. Now you've got ADU, you can rent from time to time to make a little extra money.
So that's for spaces that are particularly, that have already been set up to do have food courts or have food trucks?
I think if you're a business and you want to bring something in for the day, this is the appropriate use. It's for half a day and you already have everything that you need, restrooms, hand washing stations, all of that's provided by the property owner. This is a very temporary in-and-out kind of thing.
So your example is like HEB?
Yes.
Okay.
This is for the day, for the week, and then we allow permits, again, to discourage the lengthy stay.
Right, I was just thinking about people that have already established or if they've got the utilities and they've gotten everything all set up but don't have the restrooms already, would there be exceptions made for those people that are already in existence and already in operation?
I would say if anything, I would recommend a period of time before you come into compliance, which is what we've always talked about in the past.
But this, that we're discussing is for new stuff, so we can have a separate discussion about grandfathering already existing businesses.
We could, absolutely.
Right, I mean, as a policy, we can say that we're grandfathering existing businesses. That is an option.
And this is, again, this is just, we've set different levels, we're just having a discussion. You give us some policy direction on what you want, we will come back and rewrite the ordinance and bring it back March, April, whatever we need to, we can have another discussion about it, if you need to. But this was a topic that's going to, it's, it seems really simple, but it's a little bit complicated, so I wanted to make sure we had as much discussion about it as possible. And lastly, is your self-propelled and self-contained mobile units, for example, that are just coming in for the day, they're coming in for the hour, it's going to be very short-term. So this is a guy that's, they come in, they get the permit from the city like we agreed upon originally. It's a vendor permit and you just drive through and you can sell tacos on the street or on the corner. And again, I would establish those fees to discourage something that makes it cheaper to do that daily.
So that would be, this kind of, what you, the scenario you're talking about now would be like the ones that go to the construction sites here or there, but he's got a permit and he can just drive around and sell it to wherever--
That's correct.
The market.
That's correct. You might even bring something like this in for a special event.
Okay.
So it's very temporary, here for an hour, here for a day, in and out, in a public space.
Councilmember Peterson?
Is this guy connected to the fire hydrant?
I don't, I don't think so. It doesn't look like it.
I don't, I don't think Chief Rosales is going to let him connect to the fire hydrant.
No, I wouldn't imagine. So, but you can see they're self-contained, generator, everything they need onsite, they're in and out. That's the three options I'd propose.
Can I ask you, what is, do you have, the staff have anything in mind, a permit fee that discourages competition? What's that sound like in a number I'm writing a check for?
To me, if it's something and you do not want to compete with brick and mortar, it needs to be as expensive as it would offset some taxes. Maybe not quite that much, but it needs to be, it needs to be substantial enough that it's better for you to get into a park or another business. I could see this being a lot lighter than the, than the middle.
Counsel, do you have a feel for what you think, Councilmember Rogers?
The original one was $400 in the pilot plan. It was $400.
For that type of--
Well, they didn't have different types, but if somebody was going to consistently drive, sell, you know, drive their truck in every day for a whole year, they were going to pay the $400 fee.
I think this is your annual $400 fee. I think this is somewhere in the neighborhood of daily or weekly $100.
$100, okay.
Yeah, I see this one more as like your, the peddler permit that you guys have now, more, if they're coming in just for a special event or a special weekend.
That's correct.
But the other scenario where he was going to construction site, that's what he does for a living. He's going to do that all year round. He would want that whole year's worth of permit.
And I don't think that's going to compete with brick and mortar a lot.
Correct, right.
But these could.
Councilmember Jackson?
Right, I was just, I was a little concerned with the, competing with the brick and mortar, I mean, and the fees, because some people have set up a permanent situation and they are paying taxes and they have connected to the city with water and electricity and all that, as well as taxes. And so the fee, I think, needs to be reflective of that, but I think, I don't think it needs to be exorbitant because they are paying taxes already and have hooked up to our utilities and all of that.
So Councilmember Jackson, are you thinking of the one before? Is that what you're saying? If we go back a slide?
I think you are doing that there.
That's connected to the utilities, but this one would also have restrooms and you're thinking this is like $400 a year?
I'm thinking a year, yeah. So that's something that we, that's going to just be the cause for us to go in and make sure your certificates are up to date.
That you're safe.
You're taking care of your maintenance, but truly, this is the business plan of the property owner and I think it's, it doesn't compete.
Okay, so Councilmember Jackson, is that the example and are you--
Well, if the property owner is going to be taking care of that, that's okay, but the individual business, since they've already had to do the utilities and the taxes and all of that type of stuff, I was just concerned about that.
Well, I would expect the business owner or the property owner who rents space to the food trucks or mobile food vendor to pay the taxes on the lot, the power, water, that kind of thing. And these guys are just paying a rent there.
So we're not voting on this tonight.
That's correct.
This was a discussion. Are you guys comfortable with the levels? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with the levels. Thank you, thank you for doing that. For clarity, the people are renting the space, but the utilities, the utilities are incumbent upon the property owner.
That is correct.
And it's, so it's up to, whatever agreement he works out with the individual, with the property owner relative to individual sites on there, we have nothing to do with, nor should we, won't have anything to do with that.
That is absolutely correct.
Except making sure that each vendor's safe.
Yes.
To make sure all health and safety codes are applied.
Correct. I think there would be an annual fee and an annual inspection.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I tried to just kind of answer it. I would prefer the fee become annual because that way we know how many people are still in operation each year and not just paid it once and that's forever, just so the city knows how many people should still be out there, should, if they don't apply next year, that we know you're out in business or whichever, so.
Yeah, and if you said a lot like this, you've got substantial investment in this as a property owner.
Mr. Jobe, is that what you wanted to present to counsel?
That is it, just think it over.
Counsel, would you like to hear from our two citizens that signed up to speak? Carrie Fossler, I'm so sorry, I called you up at the wrong time.
I'm Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street and I love food trucks. I, and I've been paying attention, you know, since the October, November, I've seen all I've seen all the presentations. So I've been interested to hear the tweaks in the presentation. I'm also at the food trucks a lot. So I hear the presentations and then I hear the word on the street and they don't jive right now. And so I'm interested in how it's all going to be communicated to the people. Because what it feels like is that the spirit, that there's an unspoken agreement that mobile food trucks aren't welcome, nor are they wanted, and they're eyesores. So that is the word on the street, how it feels.
Wow.
So, yeah, they're, but, you know, they're usually, yay, tonight they are. They're usually not in the room and not streaming this because they have to go to bed early to get up early to prepare for their food. So I want to help with the communications. I'm really interested in that part when we roll out, how it can be communicated. And then selfishly, I just love Yoli's Tacos because they personally save my marriage at least three times a week. So whatever they need, I'm interested in helping always to keep them up and running. Thank you.
So Ms. Fossler, I will tell you that I, I don't think council has ever thought they were an eyesore and we didn't want them. I believe the whole point of bringing it up was that we wanted to encourage it and we thought it was a great entrepreneurial-type option for folks and provide great for special events. Council, speak up if anyone has concerns.
No, I, I agree with you. I mean, I think we were quite supportive last time. And, I mean, hey, I'm a fan of Yoli's as well and some of the other food trucks and things. So I think it's something we wanted to happen. We just wanted to make sure that we had the right procedures in place in order to make sure that they were taken care of.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention because that's certainly something that we can get corrected. That's awesome. Mayor Protem Nelson?
You know, part of our responsibility is to ensure the health and safety of any of the operations in the, in the city. And there certainly has to be some sort of regulation on what comes in to protect the investment of other people. I would encourage those vendors who have those concerns, that would like to see certain practices incorporated in this plan, to provide us with feedback so that we can make a determination of how best to serve the city while also serving their needs. So if you would encourage them to reach out to us.
I brought one tonight, next up.
All right.
Reach out.
What a perfect segue. Thank you very much, Ms. Fossler. All right, the next person we have signed up to speak is Amadio Mario De Leon. Welcome, Mr. De Leon. If you could tell us your address.
106 Palmer's Path. Yoli's, I'm co-owner of Yoli's Tacos. Unfortunately, my better half couldn't be here tonight. Just wanted to come before y'all and tell y'all thank you for allowing us to, to be here. One thing is that we love what we do and we love feeding people.
And saving marriages, I heard.
Apparently, we're not charging for that. But one thing about us that I'd like to just share with y'all, as you pointed out, Mayor, we are in the entrepreneurship. We are waiting for a standalone building or a brick and mortar. We do want to make that step. We want to be the next success story from Bastrop. Real quick, Michael Twight from Austin had a food trailer. Now they opened up one in, a brick and mortar in Smithville. And we're hoping to do that in Bastrop.
Fantastic.
And that's it.
Well, I think, I speak for council to say we wish you absolute the best of luck.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Joe, did you get what you needed from council to bring us back something?
Yes, ma'am.
And council, I would encourage you that when he does bring it back. Mr. Joe, I would ask that you just bring us recommended fees? Because council, then, you know, you'll have an opportunity to review it. And, and that's an easy thing to change, the, the numbers on the fees. But the categories that he set up, I feel like council's satisfied with that. Okay, great job. Thank you very much. Okay, they have been so patiently waiting, but I have one that will take us absolutely no time. And he is far, far away from home. And we're going to go to 9B, Colin. He loves me. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2020-13 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a trail easement and recreational trail maintenance agreement by and between the City of Bastrop and the Riverbends at Pecan Park Community Association, Inc., and its heirs, successors, or assigns attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Essentially, this is just cleaning up some paperwork, a resolution here tonight. And this slide is going to explain everything.
Dun, 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 dun.
Basically, if you can see here, this is the HOA-owned parkland. And what we are accomplishing by signing this agreement is to put an easement around this trail that allows public access. The dark green portion here will be city-owned parkland that will be dedicated with Section 2 when the plat is final, which Section 2 is, and I think I lost my spot, is right up here. So once this parkland is dedicated, and we have the easement here, this will allow a continuous trail system through the private parkland and the city-owned parkland. And then we'll also, there's also in this agreement some maintenance requirements to maintain the HOA parkland in concurrence with ours. So it is that simple. Danny Gilpin is here from a long distance, like she talked about. If you have any questions, I'm sure he'll be glad to answer.
So this is to make sure that we are agreeing upfront who's going to do what and how we're going to take care of things?
That is absolutely correct.
Council, any questions for Mr. Joe?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Have a good evening. All right, council, we're going back to page two. And I promise I'm going to go in order mostly. We're going to start with 6A, receive quarterly report on the Bastrop Convention and Exhibit Center. Ms. Danielson?
Mayor, council, thank you so much for letting me present tonight. Happy New Year, if I haven't seen all of you since January 1. But I am tickled to death to stand up in front of you tonight and give you a progress report on the convention center. This is our first quarter report compared to the first quarter of 1819. I know all of you have seen our mission statement and our vision statement. I did want to let you guys know, and hopefully you already know, that the convention center team, out of that vision statement, we are focused on customer service and exceptional experiences. And we hope to continue to do that for every event that comes through that door. And last year, we had over 30,000 people come through the convention center. 30,500, to be exact. Our first quarter bookings were down 3%. Just so you don't get too alarmed, that was 31 events down to 30. So it was just one, but that's 3%, so y'all needed to see that.
That math, that math.
Right, so I didn't, I didn't want you to think that was too bad. But our occupancy was up 28%. That means we are using it more and more during the week and on the weekends. You can see the First National Bank Christmas Party, LCRAT training was a couple of our events during the first quarter. Our revenue was up 5% over last year, which is always a good thing. And our Farm Street Opry is down 8%, but that was due to the weather in November. We had horrible weather in November and that does affect our attendance. Look how fast that was.
Look at you.
And I just wanted to say so much more, but I just want to say how much we enjoy what we do over there. I tell you, everyone tells me all the time about Steve and Benny and Ben and Andy. And if y'all haven't had a chance to work with them, please stop by and say hello. But thank you for all you do to support us.
Ms. Danielson, you and your staff do an outstanding job. I get feedback all the time of how great it is to do business and how your staff is always going above and beyond. And, and the numbers, clearly the proof's in the pudding.
And I think next quarter, there's even going to be more in the pudding. So, well, so we'll look forward to that.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. All right, council, we're going to Item 6B, receive quarterly presentation and update from the Bastrop County Historical Society. Ms. Sepicas, she's got big notes.
Hi. Hi. I have been counseled to take my time, so I'm going to try to speak slower. Okay, here we go. Oops, there we are. So I'll start with the visitor center. This is a, a look at the last three years. We're getting some nice data collected and you can start to see some trends. The first quarter obviously was better last year compared to the year before, but we are still up 10%. And we hope to do better this next quarter, too. So some of the community event support things we did was Christmas, Lost Pines Christmas. The parade supported that and the Veterans Day car show. We had a wonderful mailbox out front for Santa's letters. It was just a really fun time. Historical preservation and promotion. Of course, the big things this last quarter were the holiday rendezvous and the homes tour. We had five homes and one church. Hopefully, some of you made it out. This is an epic event. 522 attendees. That was a record for us.
Awesome.
Five homes, one church, 50 docents. I believe there's more than that, but I know there were at least 50. There's just some pictures of the different homes and it was just a really great event. Some happy people. This is another picture, rendezvous and the homes tour, a couple of pictures there. So rendezvous, we had 150 attendees. It was at the convention center and Kathy and her staff, of course, were great. Had a great time, music and great food. And we raised over $27,000.
Ms. Sepicas, last year you did it after the parade. And this year you did it on the Friday night. How, what was the kind of response? Do you got, have you guys have plans for next year?
Well, we typically have done it on Friday night. We did it Saturday because the convention center was booked that Friday last year. So it will always happen, I think, every seven years. It will be booked on that Friday, but the Friday is preferred. So, yeah, Saturday made it a bit rough, going to the homes tour, the parade, and then rendezvous. Particularly for the homeowners, which is why we do rendezvous, is to honor them. So it was hard for them to get there, but they did come.
It was an excellent event. Thank you.
So our quarterly meeting in October, we had Rose Peach at the county clerk's office. She was very interesting, taught us a lot about what you can find there. And the right there is some of the cattle brands. There's one about three or four down, which is a wine glass, which is my favorite. I just wanted to point that out. This year, we're going to do historical art expression. And the first special exhibit we did was history of live entertainment and film. And that is just closing now. And we're going to open the history of musical entertainment. So, so the Freedom Colonies exhibit has traveled to Elgin. It was there this last quarter. It was well-received. We boxed it all up and took it to the Healing History Event on the 24th. It's now going to make its way to Smithville. History of Live Entertainment and Film is also going to travel to Elgin. Seems like we started a little bit of a pipeline, I think, of exhibits. The research staff and volunteers, oh, that's why I have the book, have created an index for this book, which has all kinds of stories from the Bastrop advertiser way back into the 1800s, early 1900s. So with the index, researchers can actually find things in here based on just a name or a place or some, an event, something like that. So we're excited and we're going, we are going to reprint it, so. Our oral history program is growing. We have six new interviews that we've recorded and we did buy Dragon software. So we, I've started the process of transcribing those. We're also looking at Past Perfect Online. We haven't purchased it yet, but if, when we do purchase it, we want to put on Camp Swift first. I went to Destinations Galore, which was a really cool event for tour buses, people who go on tour buses. That was fun. And we added eight objects, 92 photos, and 130 documents last quarter.
Wow.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Sepicas? Councilmember Ennis?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Ms. Sepicas, the Past Perfect, I know you've had that locally on your computer systems. Will that now be uploaded to the online version? Or will you run them concurrently?
So the online, you can pick what categories you want to put on. You can put just photos, you can put on, we want to put on what we know, one is accurate and two, that can be, is probably accessible by most people. So World War II and Camp Swift are the two most popular. So that's why we were going to start with Camp Swift. So you don't have to, if you go to online, you don't have to put everything online. You could kind of do it piecemeal, which is, makes more sense to us, you know, as far as resources go. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and is the, is this database open to the public?
Yeah, that's the point of the online part. So we would still have the other part, which anybody could come into the library and do research. But then there will be that component where you could go online and, and find out what you needed to find out. Yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers?
I just wanted to tell you how wonderful a job you're doing. I, I see the people with the little stickers they get when they come to the museum and it gives me a chance to, you know, ask them, hey, so what'd you think? Because of course, the sticker tells me, and they just rave about being there.
Oh, thank you.
So keep the stickers going so I can keep getting the good reviews.
Thank you. And we wanted to say thank you for the chocolate that we got.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just want to ask a quick question of anyone. Does anyone remember the Tower Movie Theater and the bus station?
My husband does.
There's a few of us out there. Thank you.
And your staff is, for many people, their first impression of the City of Bastrop. And we just get constantly fabulous feedback on how friendly they are. And I just really appreciate, and I know very often it's volunteers. And it's just so great that we know that they're the, they're very often the first impression of the city.
Well, I do have to mention one volunteer. I just put him on Facebook. He has been with us five years. He's just about to finish the project of scanning every photo that we have. 4,966, there's only 127 left. So Pat McKay rocks. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, that is outstanding.
So the volunteers do a lot there, absolutely.
Absolutely. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, receive presentation and update from Lost Pines Art Center. Oh, I had already done a check, sorry. Receive presentation and update from Bastrop Opera House. Ms. Holcomb, I threw everybody off. They all looked at me like, what are you doing? Ms. Holcomb?
Good evening. There we are. So this has been another Fast and Furious and Fabulous quarter that we've had. We started off with Clue, the musical, which was, this is a cast of characters here. It was, it sold out almost every single night. It was our dinner show. And it was, it was a wonderful performance, got rave reviews. It had a different ending every single night. So, and the, and the actors truly did not know what the ending was until they started acting. So they really had to be on their toes, but they did a great, a great job. One of our special events that we brought in was Guy Forsyth and Jessica Bailey from Austin. And they do, they, they really bring in the patrons when we have them in. But, you know, as I've talked before, we have a certain amount of season shows and then we have our touring shows and, and special events, and they were part of that. Now, we have youth productions every, we have, because we have our academy and we have about 50 children enrolled in that currently. We have eight through 19-year-olds. So we have, we've actually had to add a class this semester of our eight to 12-year-olds. And we had to cut it off because we just couldn't take anymore. So we have two of those classes. We have about 32 children enrolled between the two classes. And then we have our teens. But every semester, they will do their own productions. You can see 4AM was the name of the teen production that they did. And some of these kiddos have literally grown up in Opera House. And then you can see on the other side was our middle school children who did Romeo and Juliet for kids. And they did an amazing job. At Christmas, we did the Best Christmas Pageant Ever, the musical. And I really do think it was the best Christmas pageant ever.
It really was.
It was a very large cast. It had adults and it had children. And at times it was like herding cats. But it was an amazing show as well. But it was an amazing show as well and we, we were literally adding chairs at times. We had to borrow chairs sometimes from one of the local churches to put in the back because we took all the chairs out of the studios. The actors had no place to sit and then we borrowed chairs as well. We also had our second annual New Year's Eve gala and it went over fantastic. This wasn't something that just brought in locals. We also had people that came in from Austin, from Houston. We had some that stayed overnight so that they could attend because they didn't want to have to drive back after that. It was a wonderful and beautiful event and I think from the way that we're talking, we'll probably continue to have that. This is an event that I wanted to mention that is coming up on the eighth. And this is DC Cornish. I could not possibly list all the awards that this gentleman has won over the last many years. National awards. He was here two seasons ago. He did a different presentation. And he was absolutely amazing and captivating. It's something that's not just for kids. It's for adults. It's for the family and I really want to encourage everybody to come and see him on the eighth at 2:30. And we also have in February, a Valentine Cabaret coming up. This is a dinner show and you might recognize one of the performers that's down there on the bottom left. He will be, our own Doc Jackson will be performing as well. And then we have Fools coming up in March. Okay. Our volunteer hours for September through December were eight hundred and sixty volunteer hours. That includes all of our box office hours, the concessions, the text, lights, sound, stage managing, set designs. Sometimes the set designs take, you know, days to complete and all of that is volunteer. Our ticket sales from September through December were 2,182 and our total ticket sales to patrons from outside of Bastrop County were 862. I think I mentioned last time I was in that we sold close to 8,000 tickets last season altogether.
Wow.
Which is up substantial from about three, three years ago. Let's see, I don't think I have another slide. Nope, that's it. Sorry, just messed it up. But again, I wanted to mention the DC Cornish. That's a wonderful presentation if you're able to come and see that. Any questions?
Great job. Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was going to encourage you to come and I know some of you want to throw tomatoes at me, but I'm going to be singing with Lisa in a duet, so make sure that you hit me and not her because it won't be her fault that I'm up there.
Thank you so much, Ms. Holcomb. All right, now we're at six D. Receive presentation and update from Lost Pines Art Center.
Hi, Patricia.
Yep, yeah. Just pull it down. You'll be fine.
Thank you. Thank you for having me and I'm excited to be able to share some things with you about the art center. Can't see without these. As you, as you may know, our mission is to foster the creation and appreciation of fine arts through rich and diverse programs and to enhance the lives through the creative power of art and establish the art center as a major destination. So let me share some of our programs. Okay, I don't know how to use this machine. This one? Know how to go back. Okay. Okay, we have Art After Dark. It's the first Saturday of every month. It is a, an exhibit, live music, and we many times have art talks. During the last quarter, we had one with, it was Glenn Whitehead, presented by his wife, Wanda. He had passed away. He's a longtime native Texan and well-known throughout all of Texas. He didn't always live in Texas, but when he moved out, he said the first thing he did was, you know, pine for Texas and he came back as quick as he could. We had, generally with our Art After Dark's, we were having about fifty to seventy-five people and so we have a goal to keep increasing that. This one was over eighty-five. We also, besides the Art After Dark's that are on the first Saturday of every month, we have experiences. We have acrylic pours. We have unwind events. Our unwind events are experiences that have anywhere from ten to, we've had as many as thirty-four. The one that we had with thirty-four, everybody was from outside of Texas. So that was kind of a neat experience because they got to experience Bastrop. And then we have the glass blowing. And if you haven't seen that, definitely come out and see that. We're going to have a lot of demonstrations coming up, so you'll hear about that soon. I don't want to share that quite yet. In December, we had our Lavish Fest, which is the second year. That was art, chocolate, vendors, and music, and we had over 200 guests. Handmade Holiday, this was the first year that we did a fall festival. As you may know, that in the, just across the street was a fall festival, art festival, for many, many years in Bastrop and that stopped. So we started doing that this year. That was well received. We had it in our backyard and we had over 400 attendees. We, I actually just talked to a lady today who said the first time she's ever been to Bastrop was at the Fall Festival and then she came back today. So we're excited that we're bringing these in. With our events, because we want people to really experience it, I've, you know, I'm working with the Opera House and the Visitor Center and Rebecca and Visit Bastrop to share our social media. Because I've got, I've got almost 4,000 followers on Facebook. The, the Opera House has about the same amount and the museum has more. And so we're kind of sharing and that kind of shares the audience. It also makes it so that our, our group events that we're creating can be shared. We also have venues going on at the art center. During the last quarter, we had three. We had two weddings. Well, actually, we had technically four. We had two weddings and out of the weddings, we had over 150, 160 for each. One of the weddings, about half of the people were from England and the United Kingdom. I don't know what the difference is, but that's where they said they're from. And then the other one, the bride and all her family were from California, New Mexico, so they converged onto Bastrop. We had a training. I don't know if you know what infrared drone training is, but with the Visit Bastrop, they actually brought it to us, Catherine, and we had fifteen attendees on that. All of them were from out of town. Four of them were from out of state and three of them were from other countries, Nigeria, Mexico, and Canada. That one, since Visit Bastrop helped us with, I contacted Susan to say, okay, you know, besides the impact it has on us, what is the impact on Bastrop? So she used all the numbers that she has with her calculator and she had come to the number of $26,609 for that five days that the people were here with their, you know, hotels, eating outs. So that was really exciting. And then we also got to host the Chamber of Commerce Mingle Jingle. In that, we had 129. We didn't hit that 130 mark, but that's okay. Upcoming events, as I mentioned, our Art After Dark is the first Saturday, so our next one is this Saturday and we're hosting Brian Joseph. Is part of, February is our focus, is Black History Month. You can see a picture of Brian on there. Definitely come. He's an artist that believes in social equality, education, and peace. His artwork is the fictitious Bidy People and Bidy stands for Bringing You Delightful Entertaining Experiences. So we're excited to have him. And then we also have on February 8th, right after the Opera House, we have some music. And then we, on the 22nd, we're going to have an art class. That's going to be the Harlem Renaissance. We have a gospel choir and then we have, she describes it as Afromodern Ballet Performance and Workshop. I don't know exactly what that is, but I'm excited to find out. And then in March, we have our Art Immersion, which is our, our conference. We couldn't get what we do done if it weren't for volunteers. During the last quarter, we had fifty-nine volunteers. They did anything from hanging our artwork, assisting with events, getting and scheduling volunteers, gallery docents, and just everything imaginable. Oops.
All right. Councilmember Jackson?
I just wanted to thank you for bringing Brian Joseph in. He's a friend of mine, actually, and I have several of his pieces of artwork and it's just, it's really great. If y'all would Google Brian Joseph or Bidy Man and you'll see some wonderful pieces of art. He is, he's, it's just so colorful, it's so vibrant and it's something I think that you would really like. So I encourage you to go to the exhibit because it's, it's just, the imagination in the Bidy People is really wonderful.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rogers?
I just have a request. I heard you tell me how many visitors you have for all your different events. I was wondering if you can track them so we can tell if they're going up or down or, you know what I'm saying? So maybe on the next one, right, kind of give us a pie chart or whatever.
For our Art After Dark's and our Art Getaways, which we also have in February, they are going up. You know, they were in the fifty for our Art After Dark's and now they're at seventy-five, eighty-five and we have a goal of 150, 200.
I know you're growing, so that's why I was saying you're growing, so give yourself the, the.
Oh, get credit.
Yeah, give yourself the credit. I was saying that way you can show the credit that you're getting.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, council, we're moving on to item six E. Receive quarterly update from Bastrop Family Branch of the YMCA of Austin. Ms. Terry Lynn Moore. Mrs. Terry Lynn Moore.
Okay. First quarter report. Yes, everyone gets to play at the Y. In case y'all didn't know that, I wanted to emphasize that yet one more time. Everyone gets to play at the Y. Financial assistance is always available. Please tell people that because we still have people coming in the doors and saying they didn't know. So please, please share that. I will tell you that in October through November, actually, that should be December on there, is up 66% over 2018.
Wow.
Fifty-nine percent over 17. Membership at the end of the year was at 304 units. That means our family, individual, one adult family and couple units at 314 and then we had 108 silvers. Silvers means silver sneakers or silver renew insurance programs. Today, we are at 348 and 136 silvers. So that's just in a month. So life is good. I'm pretty excited. I mean, our membership has really done well. We are here for good. We have participated in the Arbor Day Celebration. We were out there with the Parks Department. They were gracious enough to include us in that. We had cups out there. Smokey the Bear was out there. We made little pennies and stuff like that. The YMCA provided cups to where kids could plant seeds and that kind of stuff. We did participate in the Christmas Parade and we are part of the Parks Board meetings as well as Juneteenth meetings. We organized the Halloween Fest. The number that we got for attendance was 1,500 approximately. I worked the front parking lot. That parking lot was full 30 minutes into it. It was crazy town. New this year was the Flash Dance. We did have Thriller. We had people showing up and doing the Thriller dance, which was super cool. And we did bring back the costume contest again this year.
It warms my heart that there's still people who know what Thriller is.
Oh, there was a six-year-old going around, walking around like this. It was like, it was pretty cute. Your team is calling. I mean, everybody has a place on a team. Program growth has been phenomenal. This time last year, we did not have a gymnastics program. Today, we have 80 children registered in gymnastics for January. We have 15 kids on waiting list. We have run out of space in January. Youth and government, we had eighteen children or students, high, high school and middle school that were homeschool students. And then we had, worked with Bastrop Intermediate School and they've got 15 kids, intermediate school age kids in the middle school program. We have three students going to state this weekend, which is pretty cool.
Nice.
Flag football was, this last season was the first time we had flag football. We did have an adult soccer program and everybody knows about pickleball, right?
Oh, yeah.
We got, pickleball is growing. It's pretty phenomenal how involved. And just for general information, pickleball is not just for active older adults. Pickleball is for all ages. It's a fun game. It's a lot of fun. I encourage you to get out there. What the challenge is right now that most of the games are going on while most of us are working. So that's where that kind of idea says it's for, you can't play unless you're retired. That is not true. We also have, we started ballet this, this last quarter. Had our very first winter recital. I'm not going to kid you. It was so cute. We did it at the Opera House. They were gracious enough to allow us to use that facility and there were such cute kids up there doing ballet. So that was, that was super fun. Make sure I don't have anything else on here. Oh, we also did the Great Transit Adventure. We had 15 kids this year, which was our max. You know, when the kids, they talk about, now I know how to get out of Tahitian Village, you know you have accomplished something. Fun. We're working hard for good. Our senior programs continue to grow. We have weekly hikes. They mark their time and their, the amount of length of the hike and that kind of stuff. We do member socials every Monday at 1:30. Those socials could be anything from board games to line dancing. We do Silver Sneakers, Silver Renew and all those programs as well. AOA Strong is a great class and Chair Yoga. Those are all active older adult programs. Just side note, that's a picture of our new group exercise facility. We're doing group exercise now in the lumberyard at 1109 Main Street. We've got lots of sunshine ahead in 2020. We're super excited. We're growing for good. We have a new gym that will be opening up to the public on Thursday. That gym space is located at 1112 Main Street, has cardio equipment in the front room and strength and equipment in the back. We do have a larger group exercise space and that is located at 1109 Main Street in the lumberyard. Now, all of our staff is centrally located at 1110 Main Street. I'm super psyched about being in the same building with my peeps. I don't know how excited they are yet, but I'm super psyched. We do have personal training. Mi Mundo is a new preschool program. It's three days a week. It's from nine until noon and it's a Spanish immersion program. So they'll be taught in both Spanish and English to try to teach both languages. Toddler Time is busting the seams out of the walls and we do sports clinics every, every season. We are open for registration for soccer and volleyball. Look, we've got so many opportunities to come in this community. You know, our community, our mission is to help build strong communities and we're glad to be a part of that. We have our grand opening for our block on Main Street on February the 10th. I hope that you will put it on your calendars and attend the ribbon cutting. The event, open house is from 4:00 until 5:30. Ribbon cutting is at 4:30. We've got area pastors coming at 4:00 to help share blessings on the building and the staff and the programs and our members. So I do hope that you'll come share some healthy treats. Anybody got any questions?
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes, ma'am. Just clarity. Does everyone get to play at the Y?
Yes, sir. I'm so glad you asked that question.
Thank you.
We do have financial assistance available if you know of anyone that needs that.
Council, any other questions for you? Great job.
Thank you.
Great job. All right, we're going to skip F and G because I have a bunch of folks who have worked all day and we're going to go to item six H. Receive quarterly report from Visit Bastrop. Ms. Smith? Well, they have to stay, so I'm trying to. Councilmember Rogers is pointing out, yes, Ms. Waldron, I know you and your staff have worked all day as well, but they can go home and you guys can't.
Actually, I was saying I worked all day.
You're all excused.
There you go.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to, where's my, my? This is our quarterly report. We, we were reporting monthly and at our last joint council meeting, we approved to meet quarterly, so we have a lot of information. I know it's late. We will try to zoom through it, but still give you some of our great highlights. Before I start going over some of the highlights for Q1, I would like to introduce a new team member that we have. Her name is. Her name is Cherry Kay Abel, and she's our new Director of Sales. If she wants to come up real quick. We're very fortunate to have Cherry, and she's just gonna talk real quickly about her background so you can get to know her just a little bit.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Cherry Kay Abel, and I've been in the association field for like 15 years. I was born and raised in Austin. I have roots out here. My father has been out here for probably 30 years. He's, well, he's passed now, but he had been out here, and his, um, his children are still here. My husband and I moved out here about four years ago, and my husband just moved his business out here last year. And so I'm here now. So I'm really blessed, and I used to run an association in Austin, and I used to sell the city of Amarillo years ago, so I'm here to boost Bassdrop.
Bassdrop's gonna be a lot easier to sell than Amarillo, I'm thinking.
And I'm excited, because everybody I've met has been enjoyable and met some hoteliers, so I'm just ready to get to work and make some things happen for Bassdrop.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'd also like to point out and thank some of my board members that are here tonight. Marcus O'Connor, who stayed through to the end. Mindy Raymond had to leave, and Kathy Danielson, who reported earlier, Case the P Gus, who reported earlier, Sean Plutch is here, Kevin Plunkett is here. And I just want to thank them for being here to support our, um, our quarterly report. So, we're, um, highlights from the past quarter include three trade shows, meetings. Um, we have two new board members, Terri Lynn Moore, who was just here, a little bit of excitement there. And she will be representing the sports segment. And we also have Tom Dickey from Neighbors, who will be representing nightlife and entertainment. Our newsletter is, distribution is improving. We have really high open rates of 30%, and that's for, average of 30% for meeting and events as well as tourism. Uh, the music festival is slated for May 14, 17 through the 19th. And one of the exciting new initiatives we're looking at is the music-friendly community designation. So we'll be working with the county and economic development to make that happen for Bassdrop. Our sales, ooh, this is not good. Our sales look great for the quarter. Um, we have eight, we had 18 leads that came in at around $2.2 million in economic impact. Um, it looks like 10, I can't see that, I'm sorry. Is it 10?
Yeah, it's 10.
Thank you, 10 definite's.
And Ms. Smith, let me just, council, for those of you that are on your iPads or people that are at home, we're on page 123. It's, because it came out fine in the packet, so I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. Oh, that helps.
Ms. Smith, Councilmember Jackson has a question.
I've got a quick question, because you were saying the music festival was 17th through the 19th?
Oh, 14th through the 17th.
14th, 17th, okay. Don't scare me.
Wrong ear. Sorry about that. Um, okay, leads, 18 leads over the past quarter for an estimated $2.2 million in revenue that was presented to our hoteliers for business. Um, we closed 10 leads for an economic impact of $607,000. And what I'd like to point out for that is, is that's only in the first three months. So we are at halfway of reaching what we're already, we're funded for 1.2 million. We're almost halfway there in the first three months of the year, so that's very exciting.
Thank you for helping her out, Colin. That was, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Colin. Uh, we had one lead assist at the Hyatt for $359,000. Uh, we also lost a lead at the Hyatt, but we are actually, Catherine Lang is in Bernie right now. We will find out tomorrow if we have been awarded a very large RFP for the Hyatt, which is the TACVB meeting, and it's up against, we are up against Conroe and Grapevine. So we'll know tomorrow, hopefully have some really good news to share around that sales effort. Our lodging report, there's October, November. There's really nothing to report. Everything has been just increasing very slightly or just staying the same. The average has been, um, nothing to be alarmed about. Our trends look good overall for, internationally, not so good. That continues to decline. Domestic business and domestic leisure are both increasing. Um, business is going a little bit faster than, um, business is going a little bit faster than leisure, but they're still improving as we go forward, so no alarms like nationwide. Hot fund special event funding. We began our year with $81,000. We typically have $75,000 a year. There was some rollover from last year. Um, after the first three months of the year, we have paid out $66,000. We have a balance remaining of $7,500. We have pending applications for that $7,500. So our balance at this point, after the first three months of the year, is at zero. Our fiscal year under this program, we had...
Can we go back?
Uh-huh.
So...
Whoops.
Council, I just want to be clear on, these events that you've funded, are they, were they during the first quarter? Or are they throughout the whole year? I'm, I'm asking the obvious question of, do we need to review hot funds and see if we want additional money if you're pulling in that many room nights and such?
That's my next slide.
Oh.
Thank you for that. Yes, well, it all occurs, those events are all scheduled to occur this year, so they're all within the calendar year.
So they're outside the first quarter, though?
They're outside the first quarter, yes. Um, so fiscal year 1819, we had, with the $75,000, we funded seven groups for an economic impact of $454,000. And in fiscal year 1920, we had eight groups for an economic impact of $809,000. So I, in my notes, I do have that I'd love to ask City Council to consider additional funding for this initiative. And I feel that we already have one application pending that we will not be able to fund, and that gentleman is looking for $15,000 with an expected economic impact of $100,000.
Okay, so this, the way this is on staff reports, we can't take an action on that, but Mr. Jobe, we could ask you guys to take a look at it and let us make a recommendation. And I would encourage Ms. Smith that you maybe spend some time with Mr. Jobe and kind of get it, you know. Council, my thoughts would be, I don't want to give her $5,000 at a time and go through this. Let's, let's give her another chunk that's reasonable. Is, is that how you guys are? Okay, so y'all come back with a reasonable number, and then we would need to have that on the agenda for, for action.
Great.
It certainly seems like an easy question. Councilmember Rogers?
I had a comment before you switch over to the website. I just wanted to, to tell you that the lodging reports that you do is so much easier to read than the whole spreadsheet of things I didn't understand.
They're easier for me to read as well.
So I just wanted to thank you for making it so much easier for me to understand, before you go off to the website.
That's okay. Any other questions before we move to marketing?
Um, my compliments on that, too. I do have a question on the status quarter one. The lead assist to the Hyatt for the $359,000, that was a, that was a lead, didn't go definite, right?
That's right, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately.
For clarity, your fiscal year 1920 started September 1?
Fiscal, October 1.
October 1, thank you.
Like ours. Right, you're in sync with us.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Okay, can she...
Any other questions? All right, Ashton's gonna come up. I know we have a lot of slides where she's, she's been told and suggested, she goes very briefly.
We're watching you, Ashton, we're watching you.
And then, um, at the end, I don't know if it's on here or not, but there was a glossary that was attached to this, so I hope that you found that helpful.
Very helpful.
Good evening, mayor and council. Like Susan mentioned, I'm gonna, we got a lot of ground to cover since it's our first quarterly report with you guys, so I'm gonna try and be brief. So if you have any questions along the way, just flag me down. So since we're bringing to you October and November and December's traffic, I wanted to kind of give you a full picture view and then kind of circle in on that timeframe there. Uh, it looks like there was some formatting issues with the box, but it kind of covers October, November, and December there. And what you can see is a slight increase in that year-over-year traffic, and I just wanted to call that out. Um, that spike in growth year-over-year can be attributed to our partnership with the Main Street program this year. Um, we talked with them and decided we would be the source for the information for Lost Pines Christmas, um, since we already kind of market the webpage as, we really market it, so we thought it would just make sense to kind of add another page for the Lost Pines Christmas. So a little spike in growth there, and just kind of wanted to explain what that was. Um, this right here is our benchmark when we monitor the website. Uh, the first row shows the industry average, and then the second row shows our benchmark. And so we, we are always monitoring the industry average against how we are performing, and then that third row, which shows the difference between the metric and how we are performing. So right now, we are outperforming the industry average. And then every once in a while, depending on engagement and how people search, that kind of drops below, and then we just kind of figure out how to inflate and bring it back up. Moving into public relations, which is a heavy part of our marketing focus. Um, Q1 overview, we were featured in 51 pieces of coverage in October, November, and December, again, thanks to the many great events that we have going on during the holiday season. Media relations, we did send during the holiday, I'm sorry, I thought this was gonna be a different slide. Proactive outreach. Proactive outreach is part of our ongoing marketing efforts. We present Bassdrop to writers in hopes they will consider us for article generation. So in Q1, you can see a list of the bullet-pointed publications and what they were writing about, and then we pitched Bassdrop for a chance to be written in those articles. The Veterans Day Car Show goes on in November, and so we assist them with their media efforts. So we sent out a, a media effort to all the news in October ahead of the event in hopes that they would come out and generate some coverage about it. And we, and, uh, we got a, we also did a press release for holiday festivities in Bassdrop, Lost Pines Christmas. And then some of the secured coverage from that outreach is things like this. So we proactively pitch, and then every once in a while, we, what we call pickup, where someone actually does write an article, and then they share it with us. And it's just really good buzz and PR to let people know that we are here, we are a destination, and what we have going on. So this one here was Hyatt being featured in the nine New Year's Eve hotel packages for families in 2019. Another piece of secured coverage for the Veterans Day Car Show, we had Tiara Newbaum. She came out for Good Day Austin. She did three separate segments. We moved the cars around town, and we just had a good time and talked about the event. It was a lot of fun. Um, and then, uh, after talking with Tiara, we brought her back for Christmas to cover the Lost Pines Christmas. So we did a shot out at the Holiday Homes. We featured one of the Holiday Homes. And then we moved over to the Opera House, and then we went on to Scream Hollow to show some of the different things that we had going on during the holiday season. More secured coverage for the holidays. And then moving on to the blog, we're covering three months here, so the first page will show you our October blog performance. Um, two blog posts, obviously talking about the fall happenings around October. And then in November, we were kind of teasing people about holiday, and then we occasionally will interject some meeting-focused marketing into our blogs. So, um, this one in December, we talked about why you should plan a meeting in Bassdrop. And then where did we, this is a little past the curve now, since it's already January, but we did post two blogs in December, and then we've already posted two in January as well. So that's always a fun part of our marketing efforts, because it's us telling our own story. So we, we enjoy writing the blogs. Social media influencers are a big part of our marketing efforts. We do about four a year. Um, we thought it would be a really great opportunity to bring in Suzie in late September. She covers food and drink. She brought in one of her girlfriends, and they just kind of palled around town, and they went to, you can see right there, their featured attractions, the food and dining places they went to, and then a link to her blog post with estimated views. And then another just kind of fun highlight, showing some of her social media impressions and engagement and reach. Um, these people are really good to bring into town, because they've got loyal followers, and it's just, it just kind of spreads like wildfire when you can bring someone in with that big of a following. Then we also brought in Erin Ruoff. Her platform is called Hello, Hi Lovely. Um, she's a mom and a family blogger, so we thought it would be really cool to bring her in for the kickoff of Lost Pines Christmas Celebration. They came into town, they did the tree lighting. Um, this next slide shows all of the places she went to, and then a link to her blog post. And then here is her social media highlights. Event submissions. Event, we submit our local event from all of our various partners to statewide calendar listings. In Q1, we had 30 events picked up and shared on multiple calendars around the state. So that's really fun to see. And we always submit, not all the time do they pick them up, so when we can get them to pick up 30, we're happy with that. Here are some looking ahead initiatives. I won't read them all out to you, but we're constantly sourcing more bloggers, looking for blog posts. Um, we have bad sales in our meeting and visitors. We are starting planning for the Bassdrop Music Festival, so a lot of big and fun projects going on right now. Moving on to our digital efforts. We have invested this year in Tour Texas. Um, Tour Texas, we have a profile with them. Tour Texas is a highly respected resource, having this presence elevates awareness about Bassdrop as a destination. This is a statewide visit site, and it's kind of a paid play space in our world. So if you don't pay for the profile, you just aren't listed as a destination. So a lot of good call to actions to hear. People can click on our website for more info, they can view the video, there's links to our socials, um, so all kinds of internal links to go to our homepages. And then I just want to give you guys a brief overview of some of the things that we see coming in. Requesters guide, how many people have viewed the page, how many people have clicked through to our actual website and possibly some of our member partners. Um, and so really good performance for Q1. This is an annual investment for us, so we will bring this report to you quarterly. Um, Google search, this is a big part of our marketing effort. Obviously, the objectives are to build awareness about us and to drive qualified traffic to our website. And then the takeaways for Q1, Austin and Houston are driving a lot of interest, so that just basically tells us that people who live in those communities are curious about what we have going on. Females, the moms, they seem to be kind of heading the charge. They make plans, they plan vacations, and so we monitor that demographic. Kind of tells us who we need to be feeding. Um, our top performing ad groups are well above the 2.7% click-through rate, which is an industry benchmark, and then the same key takeaways for December as well. This right here just kind of tells us our user engagement by location, service, and day of the week. So kind of self-explanatory there. Um, we saw a lot of pickup in Saturday, so that tells us we need to be posting stuff on social media on Saturdays, because people are looking at us. Another, just a really good visual, you can kind of see that flat line before we started Google marketing, and you can kind of see the activity after that. So really good impressions and click-through rates and conversions for us. And then moving on to our print campaign. Um, we do have a really healthy print campaign. We run ads in Texas events, Texas highways, South Central Motor Coach and ABA, so a very healthy mix between leisure and group. And then here are some of the visual ads that we have placed in the industries that they represent. Any questions?
Good job. Any question? Good job, Ashton.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Smith, is that it? Are you...
That's it. Thank you.
Fantastic. Council, this was our first quarterly? Got all the information you wanted?
Good, okay, great. I hope you enjoy the glossary.
All right, and thank you to your board for the time that they give and for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And your staff, you did a good job. Okay, council, it is 9:08. Does anybody need a bio break? We have five or six more things. We're rocking and rolling. Um, we will go back to the top of the page, which is present and discuss the communication plan for the Main Street Rehabilitation Project. Ms. Gleason?
Good evening, good morning, mayor, city council. I am incredibly excited to be here this evening to discuss the Main Street Rehabilitation Project. Um, specifically, I'd like to discuss our communication plan to ensure that we are being good partners with our visitors, our locals, our downtown property owners, residents, and businesses. Um, as all of y'all know, it took a lot for us to get here to this project, and so we understand that, and we are thankful for that process and all the people that it took to get here. This is a project that was built by the community for the community. And it's also gonna be a huge economic catalyst for our downtown. Um, we are building a Main Street that will be there for the next 100 years, and so we take a lot of pride in that, and we are thankful for everyone that came together to make this project happen. Looking back at the building Bassdrop process that all of y'all have gone through, um, the purpose statement that you adopted was to create a fiscally sustainable community through three... statement that you adopted was to create a fiscally sustainable community through land use standards that are authentically Bash Drop and geographically sensitive. Building Bash Drop was created to make a new set of tools that would responsibly support the community for generations to come. Now that the Bash Drop building B3 codes are complete, city-based development can occur. Building Bash Drop name, still honoring those same tenants that y'all adopted of proactively managing growth, investing in sustainable infrastructure, and encouraging responsible development. Our project is large in scope. We are doing the sidewalks from Farm to Pine Street. We are resurfacing roadway from Spring to Water. And we are building brand-new sidewalks from Pine to Water. That will also include the placement of landscaping, crosswalks, bike racks, and more benches. The first thing we did when talking about the project and its scale was determine that we needed objectives. We needed objectives both for the communication plan and for the project itself so that we can know on the other side of it whether or not we were successful. Our first objective was to limit disruptions to intermittent intervals occurring cycles. We are very acutely aware of the impact that this project will have on citizens, visitors, and our Main Street businesses. So we want to make sure that we are creating a plan that will have as small impact as possible. We also want to produce a schedule that anticipates special and significant days or events to our downtown businesses on both a macro and a micro level. So whether that is just it is a large sale day for them or they're having an event, we also know that our downtown Bash Drop is the venue for an enormous amount of community events. So we wanted to make sure that we were having as little to no impact on those as possible. So this means that the construction schedule that we're building is coming from us to the construction team rather than the other way around, which my exact words were, "I'm going to be all up in your business." We are going to conduct personalized partner meetings with property owners, business tenants, and residents to control personal impact. This is really what we are most excited for. So those partner meetings will occur for each cycle. So we will be doing cycles in blocks and we will be doing one half of the block. For instance, we may be working on Farm to Spring Street, the West Side. That would be a cycle. We will meet with all of the building owners, businesses, or residents that are part of that cycle to discuss impact. And that means if Granny's 100th birthday is occurring Thursday and you have 50 people coming, we want to know that. We want to make sure that we're not in front of your door. And so that's really the purpose of our partner meetings, to ensure that we're being good partners with our downtown stakeholders. And the last objective, we are appointing project liaisons to assist with communication strategies, manage construction impact, and really coordinate preemptive problem solving before it's actually an issue.
Who are going to be the project liaisons?
Project liaisons for this are myself and Tony B. So Tony B brings actual experience and construction knowledge. And I am there for, so I can be immediately available and to bridge those relationships between Tony, the technical experience, and our downtown. Project rollout. So in order to prepare for this project, we've appointed our project liaisons. As I mentioned, we have created signage that will be going up downtown. It was supposed to be last week, but we had a little bit of rain. So I'm assured that it will be up tomorrow. We have three pieces of signage going up on public property and we have permission from a private property owner to place a fourth sign. We have also used our Building Bash Drop website to help push out construction updates. So we did not want to lose all of the history that is part of that Building Bash Drop website. It did a great job of chronicling our journeys to get to our B3 code. So we have simply rearranged. So that way, when you go to the website, you can see all the Building Bash Drop history, or you can get updates on any of our capital improvement projects. We have also created business cards that will get you to Tony and I. So those will be going with our downtown partners, at the front desk, and with the actual construction crews. The last is, we will be hosting a groundbreaking event. And really, the key is, we want to celebrate the commitment that was made by our downtown properties, business owners, residents, and community to bring this much-needed project to Main Street.
When is the groundbreaking event?
We don't know because I don't know a construction start date. So if a construction start date's on a Monday, we'll backdate it to that Friday prior. So everything's been ordered for the event and the event is planned. We'll just, as soon as I have a construction start date, I can make a groundbreaking event.
What is the holdup? We were supposed to have shovels in the ground on Jan. 2.
Mr. Jobe, we're looking at you. Or for sure Rebecca is, so.
So first, we wanted to develop the communication plan, make sure that was secure and taken care of. I believe the start date is February 17. We are massaging that back and forth and still going to meet our six-month schedule. So the plan is to make sure we let everybody know. Three weeks ahead of time when we're going to be there, we want to make sure we got that done and back it up. And the contractor is comfortable that we can still meet our schedule. And he's going to bring in a second crew.
Councilmember Ennis, does that answer your question?
That is the holdup.
Not really. I want to start seeing some action.
Sure. So the holdup was developing the communication piece. That's the holdup.
And it's just a matter of setting up expectations. I thought that was why we bid the project in the fall. And I guess we're kind of wondering.
We've already held a pre-construction meeting. We're ready to go. The contractor was finalizing some last-minute details, such as irrigation and things like that with our crews. And then we should be able to move forward.
And the issue is that publicly, the last time we talked about it, when we approved the contract, it was, "So we're going to start January 2nd. We're going to get through the Christmas holidays and get going on this." And from a citizen's standpoint, January's gone.
Gotcha.
And I guess what I'm hearing you say, and I'm just trying to be clear, is we're starting late, but we're going to have the same end date.
That's correct.
And so they are rearranging the work schedule to try to get it done in a.
That's correct. And we wanted to work around events that were downtown, get that schedule together. Wanted to be as seamless as possible. This is why it's taking a little bit longer.
So February 17?
That is the goal. Yes, sir.
So if he's starting construction February 17, when is your groundbreaking event?
That Friday.
Which is 14. Okay. Happy Valentine's Day.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. And are you okay with that?
Absolutely. That is, when I spoke to Tony, that is the schedule that we will likely start, the 17.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson, go ahead.
No, I was just, so six months, that's going to put it in kind of middle of summer with two parades that I'm thinking of, Juneteenth and Homecoming. I guess Homecoming is in August, so maybe, hopefully it'll be done by that time.
So we have strategically planned which cycle we will be in depending on the event. Part of the project will also be, every Friday, they're going to spend doing wrap-up and cleanup. So there should be little to no impact on the weekends.
Yay, way to go. And Mr. Jobe saying, "That's why we had to work on the communication plan." Councilmember Rogers?
So the six months was starting in January or the six months is starting in February?
It'll start in February, once they start construction.
Well, that doesn't, well, wait, you didn't say you didn't make it any longer. You said they started late, but they still finished in the six months. So that would have been the six months from January.
They have a six-month window to complete the project, once they break ground.
Okay. And what council's saying is, we thought that six-month window started on January 2. And you're saying that six-month window's starting on February 17?
That's right. Everything was executed and signed after that meeting and we opened bids.
In January, in summer.
And then you have a 30-day notice to proceed, which that's what the period we're in now. We've developed a schedule and we will start. Does that make sense?
So you're saying it'll be finished by the end of August?
Yep.
Not the end of July. I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So.
It's a communication issue. And so it is what it is. But we're just trying to make sure we get everybody on the same page now.
I don't want to be able to say anything until the end of August, then when I can say something. So I was trying to ask you when I can say something.
We will come back and provide a construction update once they break ground and we'll give you a schedule and the whole nine yards. Tony will be here to speak on that every month.
But our wonderful friends at the press, if they're posting something on Facebook, the expectation is the groundbreaking event is February 14, construction start is February 17, and we anticipate six months to complete it. And then things happen. If there's an issue or something gets done faster, you'll give us updates, but that is the plan.
Yes, we would like to be in and out of there as quick as possible.
That's perfect. I just want to make sure I understood exactly, not where the six months was starting. That's all.
Okay.
I understand.
So that's back to the middle of August, but it sounds like to Councilmember Jackson's point, Ms. Gleason and you guys working together are well aware there's a Juneteenth parade. And so you've made, you're doing all you can to not be disruptive.
Correct. That was the goal. Yes.
That's awesome. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I think that was super helpful, get us all on the same page.
So the goal with this project is going to be communication, more communication, the most communication, and then we're going to communicate again. So to kind of go over that, project rhythm will be done for each cycle. So again, a cycle is one-half of one block. So three weeks out, we will put out the information about the partner meeting. Two weeks out, we will host that partner meeting. And again, that is to explain individual impact and to make whatever necessary changes we can. One week out, we'll do an all-department meeting. That will include everyone, so fire, police, parks, Public Works, Convention Center. Everyone will know what's going on. Place the no parking signs if there's any parking impact, which is the goal is little to none. And then the Friday before, we do construction on your block, whether it's on your side or the other side. We'll let you know so there's no surprises. And then the day before, we're actually in front of your door, we're going to remind you again. Additional communications going out. Myself and Tony will be here to do a monthly city council update. So that way, y'all will know what we've spent the last month doing and what we'll spend the next month doing. We have reused the Building Bash Drop email and voicemail box to get in direct contact with Tony and I. And that is both for people who own buildings downtown, residents, business owners, or just the community. If the community has questions or concerns and want to bring something to us, we want to make sure that we're accessible. So that way, if we need to make any changes, we can do so on a dime. We also will have the City of Bash Drop website that will be pushing people to that micro page for Building Bash Drop, along with social media updates, both on the City of Bash Drop and Downtown Bash Drop pages. In addition, we will be doing video updates monthly. So that way, we are pushing out information. We know that on social media, that video updates are most watched. So that's why we're going to be utilizing that. We will have a Construction Corner update in our 1832 Community Magazine. We have launching in February, the Bash Drop Downtowner, which is our Main Street newsletter going just to the businesses in our Main Street district. So we have about 250-plus businesses. And that is not meant to be a community-facing newsletter. That is a business-facing newsletter. And we'll have a Construction Corner. We also have a communication team on in place who will be receiving a press kit along with weekly updates on what's going on. I should mention that y'all are on that team. So, signed y'all up for it. So you will be getting a weekly update because I know people come to y'all to answer questions, along with the Visitor Center, the EDC, the Chamber, Visit Bash Drop, the Library, and our City of Bash Drop front desk.
Great.
So this is Tony. Tony is not only my colleague, but he is my friend and partner in pushing out our Main Street Rehabilitation Project construction updates. So Tony is fully animated and will be hopefully appearing with me in our monthly updates. So hopefully, he doesn't upstage me.
Is the real Tony okay with this being called Tony?
Any comparison between Tony B. and Tony the Traffic Cone is coincidental. Our business.
I don't think she answered the question. Just checking.
I wish we could have taped his face in the meeting where we unveiled Tony because we had not given him a heads up. So.
Maybe you've just answered my question?
He loves it. We have promised to get him Tony and Tony coloring pages for his kiddos. So he's quite the celebrity already. So Tony will be utilized also by the Main Street Advisory Board's Business Retention Committee to help remind people to show our downtown merchants a little extra love during this period because they are certainly going to need it. So think coloring pages, Instagrammable Tonys around downtown. Tony will attend our events. So you can take your photo with Tony and Tony will just remind you to please be patient during our construction period, during our events. And over the next year, Tony will be joined by several friends from Public Works. And when our project is complete, he will sadly retire his Downtown Bash Drop jersey to join his friends at Public Works
Great job, Ms. Gleason. Council, any, Councilmember Rogers?
I just want, my hat goes off to you. You have taken on this task of tearing up Main Street and all the businesses and all the headaches that are probably going to come. And you've came out with a very positive plan that just is enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would say, "We've taken on that task."
As the communication team.
Very good.
Great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Jobe, as well, for helping clarify some of that. All right, Council, the next item on the agenda is 6F. Receive presentation on the quarterly investment report for the period ending December 31, 2019. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening. I don't like following Rebecca. I'm not as clever as she is.
Colin?
But it's about the money with Ms. Waldron. We always care about the money.
That's right. That's right. I'm glad to spend that bond money on the Main Street program. All right. So here is our quarterly investment report, period ending December 31. This report is required by the Public Funds Investment Act and also our internal investment policy. So we are ending our quarter with total investments of a little over $28 million. We earned $147,000 this quarter in interest. I made a little note to myself, next time I will report this in comparison to what we budgeted. So we can kind of, you know, look at that and see if we're in line. Or I know that your packet includes a lot more detail to this report and you will see that the rate of returns and the yields have gone down. Since the end of 2018, we were almost a little over 3%. Now we're at more like 1.7, 1.6. So we've taken a little bit of a hit there. But our investments are divided out between demand deposits, 3%, money markets, 3%. We have CDs and agency securities at 53% and 41% in pooled. And I know I made a note in our purchasing policy. In our investment policy, it requires that we have 10% liquidity. We have about 47% liquidity, which means I can go get that money immediately if we weren't to need it.
And we're going to spend quite a bit this year, so.
Yes. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to address them.
Council, any questions? Good job, Ms. Waldron. And while you're there, we'll move on to 6G. Receive presentation on the un-audited monthly financial report for the period ending December 31, 2019.
Yes. So we are still early in our budget year. So we are still looking pretty positive. I'll address that sales tax issue in just a sec. All of our economic indicators are green and going up this particular month. On the revenue side, all of the funds are positive except for cemetery and very hard to gauge plot sales. So we are just going to keep an eye on that. All the funds are positive on the expense side. No issues there. General fund as a whole is 8% to the net positive. A lot of that pertains to property tax coming in early in the year. So we expect that. On the sales tax revenue, actual to forecast, we're actually just slightly negative. But I wanted to talk about the article that was in the paper on the, it's actually, it was actually reporting on the January. But just to explain how that report is created, it just. But just to explain how that report is created, it just looks at one month of one year to one month of another year, and when I put this PowerPoint in the packet, I did not have this detail, but I've added it to this PowerPoint. Once they upload the information into the database that we use, we can actually tell the breakdown much clearer. And so when I went on and looked at that information, two of our top 25 taxpayers had not paid in the same period last year. They had paid a month earlier. So when you take that and do it period over period, so when I pull those two out, we're more at about 8.8% year over year. So I'm always cautious, and I mean, I've given you the information on how those taxes get reported. I only look at current over current, because that's really, truly what we have increased from one year to the next, so this is just in there for...
And you don't have any control over when they pay?
That's right.
I mean, there's no way for you to...
Well, and without the consistency, it's very hard to... So I always pull and wait for the actual numbers to be uploaded, and I look at current on current, because that's what we've really gained. So maybe more information than you wanted, but it's pretty good information on how that gets reported. Property tax is a little over 6% coming in. Hard to forecast when people are going to pay, but we will be right in line with our estimates on that in January. Our wastewater fund as a whole is 8.5% over our forecasted numbers. The revenue is just slightly over 7% against forecast. Electric fund over, as a whole, is 4% to the positive. Their revenue is strong as well, 4% over forecast. Hotel occupancy tax, 23% net positive to forecast. And on their revenues, they are almost at break-even. We're about $13,000 over where we were last year, so we are seeing an increase there. And your legal summary. I can answer any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Council, any questions? Good job. Thank you for the extra information when something's off like that. It's very helpful. All right. Receive monthly update, item 6I. Mr. Jobe?
Sorry. Okay, I'll make this short and sweet. As you know, Matt used to do this, and I'm not near as charismatic as he is, but I will work on it, and then when we get to the end, we'll have a little surprise, introduce you to someone. So I know everyone's familiar with the mission and purpose that we have there in the Planning Department, but just to get you to the numbers, in January, counter visits were 117, permits issued were 35, pre-application meetings 11, and pre-development meetings 1. And you see the fiscal year-to-date, quite a bit of activity happening, and it's getting busier and busier every day.
Do you guys have a backlog, or do you have everything scheduled?
Everything is scheduled at the moment. So far, so good.
Good.
210 Hunter's Crossing Building, 8 and 10 just received their certificate of occupancy. Again, 908 Chestnut, Starlight Tan, 16 Pageant Hearing, and we'll go into Loop 150, Susan Nagales Related, sorry. Ongoing commercial projects, self-storage is still slightly, that picture's slightly different than the one you saw last month. There's some metal going up on the top there. We'd put this probably around 35% to 40% completion. We've actually completed the Lost Mines Professional Building. I know, here we are. And then residential projects that are going, there's 282 lots in Pecan Park, 77 at Piney Creek Inn, and the Preserve, there is, at Hunter's Crossing, another 140 units. So lots of stuff happening, and I will take any questions or comments.
Council, any question for Mr. Jobe? Councilmember Rogers?
I noticed that you said the Lost Mines Professional Building is completed. Do they have their CO?
Let me find out, because I do not know. As far as, I believe it's complete, but there has been no CO issued, and I will double-check that and let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
They do have it. There you go.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. That was a timely update, Mr. Jobe.
I know they're occupying it, so I hope they have a CO.
I assumed they would, but I knew it was completed, so that should be CO.
Thank you.
And...
Back in December, Chief Rosales is saying.
Again, this is not usually my report. I apologize for that.
No, no, no.
But before we get finished, I want to introduce Ken Flynn, who's interim Director of Planning. He has been with us a total of about four days, or four and a half.
So he's an expert, and we'll go ask him.
So he's an expert, and that is it.
Welcome aboard. Glad to have you. All right. Good job. All right, council, we've already taken care of citizen comments, and the consent agenda has only one item, consider action to approve city council meeting minutes from January 14th regular meeting and January 15th joint council and BEDC meeting.
Madam Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're on item 9A. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2020-12 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending Resolution 2020-01, calling for and establishing the procedures for a May 2nd, 2020 general election for Bastrop, Texas, and providing an effective date. Ms. Franklin?
Mayor and council, at the January 14th meeting, you all approved the resolution calling the election. Immediately after that, you passed the additional early voting locations, and because we list our early voting locations in calling the election, we are required to come back and amend...
Update.
...the call of the election to include the additional 14, the conclusive 14 amount of early voting locations, so...
This is the city secretary keeping us legal.
Yes, ma'am. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
I move to approve.
All right. Motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We are good to go for our May 2nd general election. We are now, we've already taken care of 9B. We're moving on to 9C. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2020-14 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, providing policy direction in regard to building inspection fees in accordance with the 1965 Cooperation Agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop Housing Authority attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. If you remember, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about this. The policy direction was given to waive the fees, so what you have here before you is a resolution that does just that. So once it's executed, we will still provide inspections. We will not charge fees for the Bastrop Housing Authority.
This resolution does exactly what council asked you to do.
That is correct.
Any questions?
I move to approve.
Councilmember Rogers? I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
I'll second that.
And a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll. Great job, Mr. Jobe.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. If you go back to the first page, I'm saying my mayor's report was attached. I don't have any desire to go back to that. I do want to give any council member an opportunity, if there's anything they want to report on 4B. They do not. And, Mr. Jobe, do you have anything you'd like to report on the city manager's report? All right, we took care of 4A and 4B and 4C. We are going into executive session to discuss the following two items. 10B, city council shall convene into closed executive session for legal briefing by the city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 072 regarding legal authority to acquire real property rights for the construction of certain wastewater treatment, improvement, and related facilities. And item 10C, city council shall convene into closed executive session for briefing pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071.072.087 regarding legal, real estate, and economic development aspects of possible vendor space at Fisherman's Park. It is 9:40, and we are in executive session. It is 10:28. We are back in regular session regarding item number 11 for taking any action on items 10B and 10C. There will be no action taken, and that means, Councilmember Peterson, we're on item 12.
Mayor and council, I make a motion to adjourn.
It is 10:29, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.